Good evening. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. And welcome to our regularly scheduled City Commission meeting. For those of you who are here in anticipation of our scheduled Community Redevelopment Agency meeting, I am going to apprise you that that meeting has been canceled. The item, the one single item that was on the agenda has been pulled. So we are delighted to have you with us tonight for, as I said before, our regularly scheduled City Commission meeting here on February 6th. At this time, I'm going to ask that Ms. La Magna review the procedures for tonight's meeting.
Good evening. Agendas are available in the front of the room on the table to my right. All of the exhibits pertaining to items on the agenda are posted on the bulletin board. Please feel free to view the exhibits at any time during tonight's meeting. You are required to fill out a yellow form to speak before the City Commission during the business meeting. The yellow forms are located next to Assistant City Clerk Ms. Allison Brown. You must complete the sections that ask for your name, address, agenda item number, signature, and date. The form must be completed and placed in the designated box. Items on the agenda for first reading usually do not allow for public participation. However, there are some instances where citizens are allowed to speak on first reading items when they are considered public hearings. Items on the agenda for second reading are open for public hearing, and citizens may speak at the designated time. Resolutions under Administrative Items Number 10 are open for public comment, and you may fill out a yellow form to speak when that item is called. Item Number 7 is your opportunity to address the City Commission concerning any item on the consent agenda. Please indicate on the yellow speaker sheet the agenda item number of the item you are addressing. Items or discussions not listed on the consent agenda will not be heard during this comment section. All citizens completing the yellow form will be allowed to speak for two and a half minutes. When you approach your lectern, please speak clearly into the microphone and give your full name and address. The two and a half minute clock on the monitor above and directly in front of you will start running when you begin to speak. Pay close attention to your time; you will be told when your time has expired. Item Number 13 is the public comment form. Will convene after the adjournment of the business meeting. This is the opportunity for the public to speak on any issue that is not on the business meeting agenda. All citizens completing the green form will be allowed to speak for two and a half minutes. When you approach your lectern, please give your full name and address. Disorderly conduct in the public meeting of the City Commission. Article 2, Section 6238 of the City Code of Ordinances reads as follows: "It shall be unlawful for any person to behave in a riotous or disorderly manner in any public meeting of the City Commission, or any committee, agency, or board thereof, or to cause any unnecessary disturbances therein by force, shouting, or any other action calculated to disrupt such meeting, or to refuse to obey any ruling of the presiding officer or such meeting relative to the orderly process thereof. Please be courteous and respectful of the views of others. Personal attacks on the City Commission, city staff, or members of the public are not allowed. Please sign his cell phones and other wireless devices during the meeting. All conversation must take place either at the lectern or on the dais so that everyone can hear the business being discussed tonight."
Ms. La Magna, may we have a roll call?
Commissioner Delgado. Commissioner May.
Here.
Commissioner Gilan.
Here.
Commissioner Henry.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Trager.
Here.
Derek L. Henry.
Here. We'll now have our invocation led by Commissioner Henry, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Delgado. Please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this gathering. We ask and pray, Heavenly Father, that you help us to make the very best decisions for the least of these and for the best of these. We ask and pray, Heavenly Father, that you guide us to make sure that we are doing what we are charged to do. In your name and for Christ Jesus' sake, we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we'll move on to Item Number 7, which is public comments by people addressing the City Commission. During this time, citizens have the opportunity to address the City Commission on any item that is on the consent agenda. My one and only speaker is John Nicholson. Speaking on several consent agenda items.
(Inaudible) 13 North Grand Avenue, D, G, and H. With regard to the pipes, do we have any list or something that would tell us? Because we've been doing this for several years. How many of the pipes have been retrofitted and filled? I know that an area where Father Lopez used to be, it was full of sand, and we cleared it out, and then we put in the sure pipes. How much of the city has been done in the older areas, Beachside, Downtown, and Midtown? And are we doing a project to fill in all of the problems that might occur? Because remember, by my house on Aura Street, every 10 feet, we had dug in and repaired, dug in and repaired, dug in and repaired. If we can prevent that elsewhere in the city. Avista, they pull that tonight? And then on the half-cent sales tax? I know $41,000 sounds like a lot of money, but we're anticipating getting back, what, almost $75 million? I'm not happy that we're going to lose about $500 million that we raised, but as you said, 75 is more than nothing, but we raise more than we're going to get, trust me. Thank you very much.
That was my only speaker for the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, we can motion to pull Item 8H from the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion and from Commissioner Gilan, a second from Commissioner Delgado. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
Mr. Mayor, we can motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second. Motion from Commissioner Gilan, a second from Commissioner Reed. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
Okay. Moving on to Item Number 9C. It's Development and Administrative Services Planning Division rezoning planning development general, preserve at LPGA rezoning plan development general. This is an ordinance on second reading quasi-judicial hearing. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezone 130-plus or minus acres of property located on the west side of LPGA Boulevard and south of Father Lopez High School from Volusia County zoning to PDG Plan Development General District. Authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the preserve at LPGA Plan District Agreement with Consolidated Tamoca Land Company and All Sop Companies LLC to allow for 158 lot single-family subdivision. Repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and providing an effective date, and at the request of the applicant, to continue this item to February 20th, 2019. Motion, second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. This motion carries 7-0.
Now I'll move on to Item Number 9D. It's Development and Administrative Services Planning Division Land Development Code text amendment, mobile food vending. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance amending the Land Development Code, amending Article 5, Section 5.4, temporary uses and structures, to allow for mobile food vending as a temporary use, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and providing an effective
Second motion.
Motion from Commissioner Delgado. Bring your mic down, Commissioner. Okay. And second from Commissioner Gilan. Okay, all those in...
Can I speak?
Question? Yes.
Can I speak?
You got a speaker too?
I'd like to ask that we hold on this for a second. I'd like to ask for one more workshop, if possible. Could we continue it? Is that possible?
Well...
I'm happy to discuss it, if you'd like. I'm happy to discuss it.
Okay. We can discuss it, but you'd have to have a second, and you have to make a motion to continue it.
Okay.
But you'd also have to have someone carry that second. What, you have other speakers?
I do have a number of speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Would you want to hear from the speakers and then carry your discussion, or do you want to have your discussion?
Your choice, sir.
Let me suggest we handle the motion continue first, because we may not need to take the public comment if we're going to continue it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Let's commence with the reasons that you want to continue.
Okay. I went ahead and did another go-around of residents and another go-around of business people. This evening, there was a meeting at 5:00 held with the Second Avenue Merchants Association. It was in conflict with the meeting that we had here. Otherwise, I would have attended their meeting, and they could not make it here this evening, but they have a voice in this also. It impacts them directly. So I would like to be able to attend their meeting first and then revisit this. That's number one. Number two is I spoke with some, I'm getting, I'm getting a lot of feedback on yes and no for the food trucks. I'd like to do a little bit more research and see if we can define areas more clearly as opposed to just across the city. I would just like a little bit more time on it, if possible.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, there was a, there was a comment that was, or suggestion that was made by one of the speakers at our last hearing on this about potentially excluding the redevelopment areas. And, you know, we didn't really have a lot of conversation about that. I believe Commissioner Reed was interested in the Midtown area, perhaps retaining it. But the speakers that were, that seemed to have concerns, and some of the correspondences that we've gotten are from particularly the Beachside redevelopment areas, that seemed to have some valid issues about the effects that it might have on their businesses. And I have since then heard of two situations where it's somebody that has a parking lot that said that they would close and rent out their parking lot to put a food truck there because it would be more profitable for them to do that than it would to remain open. And in particularly redevelopment areas, that is not the kind of behavior that we want to encourage. So I would be supportive of us having another conversation about this to make sure that we have the right model as we move in ordinance forward. I believe that we will pass something. I'm just not, I'm not confident that this is actually the right crafting of that, you know, of an ordinance for Daytona Beach.
I'm going to go one further. An issue of concern for me this evening was we are still, I appreciate Mr. Chisholm, City Manager Chisholm, putting out porta potties for us in different areas. Thank you so much for moving on that. I'm still hearing about it, and I'm just wondering, I'm not sure how we manage that situation either with the food trucks, the businesses, restroom facilities. All of these issues are still a concern for me.
Okay. You have an idea? You already have one person? Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Trager.
As I said it the last time, I'm very, very, very concerned about the people who have made a commitment to stay here and not just come in and take the best money off and go out of town. The local people who have a business here and stay here, the money circulates to the benefit of all of our residents here in Daytona Beach. I am very concerned also about this model. I, I do not like the idea that they would come in during the festivals when our locals do make the majority of their money to last them through the year. If they were going to have a separate festival, maybe it might be feasible, but as of now, I cannot vote for this.
Could we call for a workshop? Anything like that?
I'm sorry.
Could we call for a workshop? One more?
I think that's a good idea.
Okay. We have three people.
We have a motion and no second at this point, however, for the continuance.
Well, I think we'll have a second. I think Commissioner Gilan is saying that as a second, I just want to carry the discussion to its conclusion.
I think the motion would need a date certain for the continuance, and we'd need to fit a workshop between now and then, so I'm not sure if we went maybe the second meeting in March. You know, we're going half-cent sales tax next week.
It is March 20th, the second meeting in March. March 20th is the second meeting in March.
When is our strategic planning session in March?
I think it was set, we were going to try to set one for the 20th, but we could always have the food truck workshop.
So if we did a work, but if we did a food truck workshop in the first part of March and then continued this to the second meeting, that would give us enough time to get the half-cent sales tax workshop in next week, not have to disrupt their schedules with where we have our next strategic planning session and slide this one in between there someplace. I'm just thinking out loud here.
Yeah. The 20th is, I don't see why there's a rush. We do want to get it to a point where we feel comfortable, so I, not even if it's the 20th, I'm not opposed to doing it the first meeting in April. So what's the rush?
She's working the motion over there.
It's not that it's a rush, that's fine, but I mean, if it's of benefit, I'm still not opposed to it, so it could be of benefit, so just keep the process moving, that's all.
Okay. Let's, whichever date, I don't care if you guys think...
20th, 20th.
The 20th is good.
Your motion will be to continue it to March 20th, and I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Okay, yes. I'd like to make a motion to continue it to March 20th.
And I will second the motion to continue it to March 20th.
Okay. All right. We have a motion from Commissioner May and a second from Commissioner Gilan. Is there any further discussion on this item from any of the commissioners? Okay. Those of you who came to speak, this item has been continued until March 20th. Well, will be subsequent to the vote.
Are we going to take public comment at that meeting? Or is that, we're not going to take public comment?
We'll take public comment when this comes up again for approval.
Because it'll be the second reading.
It'll be public comment. We're not, the workshop will not be open.
The workshop will not have public comment, as is traditional, but we will have public comment on second reading of the ordinance. We probably will have to re-notice this on first reading because of our sunset date. This is going to continue the sunset date. So in terms of process, there'll likely be a first reading and a second reading. It will have to build in for us. As you recall, the sunset date was set for a year from today's date, and because of the continuance, I'll need to change the sunset date, and we advertised the sunset date as part of the publication.
Can we amend, prior to continuing, can we amend the sunset date now, then continue it so that we don't have to have a second reading?
The problem is when we advertise the meeting for today, we have the sunset date in the advertisement, so because we're changing the advertisement, I'll need to go back on first reading and correct that.
So if you could come back on March 4th, on first reading for a sunset date of March 20, 2020, and then we could keep it on...
So depending on when you have your workshop, we could do a first reading, you know, sooner and still keep your second reading on March 20th. I believe that works out with Tish, but...
Yeah, and March falls on the same date as February does, so the first meeting is March 6th and the second meeting is March 20th.
So we could pass it on first reading without the workshop, because I don't think we're going to have an issue with the sunset date. I think the issue is the coverage area and the rules within the areas. So I would recommend we put it, the first reading with a March 20th, 2020 sunset on our March 4th agenda. And then if this, assuming that this Commissioner May's motion passes, then second reading will be on March 20th, and then somehow between now and then, we've got to fit in that workshop, and it could be after the 6th, because we're not going to, you know, like I said, that's not the issue at hand that is going to be discussed.
That'll work.
So do they need to amend their motion to continue on first reading for the March 6, 2019 City Commission meeting?
The motion's fine the way it is. We're going to continue the item overall for second reading to March 20th, right?
Okay.
And then I'll take care of first reading prior to that, the meeting prior to that.
May I ask a question, please, with regard to the workshop? Do we have to email or let you know which issues we have or what we'd like to investigate? Do we just email that to you to let you know that?
You could do that, but yeah.
Okay.
Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second to continue this. All those who are in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
Moving on to Item Number 9F. It's Development and Administrative Services Redevelopment Division Bellevita Estates rezoning to redevelopment downtown riverfront mixed-use RRD 4. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezone 0.65-plus or minus acres of property located at 919 and 923 North Beach Street from M1 Local Industry to RDB4 redevelopment downtown riverfront mixed-use, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and providing an effective date. On behalf of the applicant, this item was asked to be continued till the March 6, 2019 City Commission meeting.
I move that this item is moved to March 6 at the request of the applicant.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Reed and a second from Commissioner Gilan. Did you have a comment?
She's here on behalf of the applicant.
Okay. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
Moving on to Item Number 9G. It's Development and Administrative Services Planning Division Land Development Code text amendment, amend Article 5. This is an ordinance on first reading public hearing. An ordinance amending the principal use table in Section 5.2.8.2 of the Land Development Code to add restaurants with drive-through service as a permitted use in the T5 tourist highway interchange zoning district, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and providing an effective date.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Gilan and a second from Commissioner Delgado.
I have no speakers for this item, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
Okay. Item Number 9H was pulled on behalf of the applicant, and I'm going to read it. Do I need to read it into the record?
Yeah, let's use the same format as we're talking.
Okay. Development and Administrative Services...
Bob, we pulled, this one was pulled, so it wasn't part of the agenda.
It was pulled in the earlier motion.
Yes.
Yes.
This is one that should be read into the record, because it is technically a continuance at the request of the applicant?
No, it's not a continuance for pulling it entirely.
The applicant has officially withdrawn the application.
Oh, withdrawn entirely?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, I apologize. That's correct.
Okay.
There's only a whole page of this stuff.
Yes, a whole page.
The agenda says it's continued, so I...
Oh, okay.
They continued it from the last meeting to this meeting, and then, yeah. Then we're going to move on to Item Number 10, which is our administrative items. Item Number 10A is Development and Administrative Services Redevelopment Division Avista rezoning plan development redevelopment. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezone, I believe it's 1, 2.176-plus or minus acres of property located at 41 South Ocean Avenue from RDB1 Beachside Redevelopment Hotel Mixed Use to PDRD Plan Development Redevelopment, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the Avista Plan District Agreement with Avista Properties 7 LLC, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and providing an effective date. And on behalf of the applicant, this item was asked to be continued to the March 6, 2019 City Commission meeting.
Motion to continue.
Can this be continued before we continue 8H? Because I think the incentive agreement is part of this agreement, so in continuing this without having addressed that one yet, do we pull off?
We pulled that one. We pulled the incentive agreement, and we'll reset it contiguous with this. It'll come forward at the same time.
So the order won't matter for the two?
No, that would be fine.
Second. It was Trager.
It was Trager and Commissioner Reed.
Commissioner Reed. Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
Item Number 10B was an ordinance on first reading that the applicant withdrew. Okay. Item Number 10C is the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division Tiki Supreme rezoning to Plan Development General. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezon 12.4-plus or minus acres of property located at 241 Mason Avenue from PDG Plan Development General expired Tiki Supreme Plan District Agreement to PDG Plan Development General, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the Tiki Supreme Plan District Agreement with Tiki Supreme Inc. to allow for the development of a 102,907-plus or minus square foot industrial development, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Gilan and a second from Commissioner Trager. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
The public hearing is set for February 20th. Moving on to Item Number 10D. It's Development and Administrative Services Planning Division Orthopedic Surgery Center Second Amendment to the Plan District Agreement. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance approving the Second Amendment to the Orthopedic Surgery Center Plan District Agreement to add 4.1-plus or minus acres of property and to allow for the construction of additional 40,000-square-foot Medical General Office Building located at 1871 LPGA Boulevard, expanding the total allowable Medical General Office to 75,000-plus or minus square feet and increasing the planned development to a total of 7.1-plus or minus acres of land, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the Second Amendment to the Orthopedic Surgery Center Plan District Agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and providing an effective date. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Trager and a second from Commissioner Reed. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
The public hearing is set for February 20th. Moving on to Item 10E. It's Development and Administrative Services Economic Community Development amend the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee membership requirements to comply with changes in Florida statutes, Section 420.9076. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending, ordinance number 9337, establishing the local housing assistance program as previously amended by ordinance numbers 96259 and 08112, to comply with changes to Section 420.9076 of the Florida statute, revising committee membership requirements and providing when this ordinance shall take effect.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Gilan and a second from Commissioner Trager. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
The public hearing is set for February 20th. Moving on, Item 10F. It's the City Manager's Office Board of Building Codes Appointment Resolution. A resolution appointing one member to the Board of Building Codes for a term expiring December 31, 2021, and providing an effective date. Ms. Betty Goodman to report.
This agenda item is to appoint one member to the Board of Building Codes. The position of this board was not vacant due to the resignation of Patricia Ripley. We have received one application from Vernon Wetherholtz.
Motion to appoint Vernon Wetherholtz?
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Gilan and a second from Commissioner Delgado. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
Okay, moving on to Item 10G. It's the City Manager's Office Beautification Tree Advisory Board Appointments Resolution. A resolution appointing five members to the Beautification Tree Advisory Board to serve terms expiring December 31, 2021, and providing an effective date. Ms. Betty Goodman to report.
This agenda item is to appoint five members to the Beautification Tree Advisory Board for Zone 1. Commissioner Trager?
I'd like to appoint Susan Bussinger.
Second.
Well, you have to do them, okay. All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
Is Zone 2 Commissioner Delgado?
Megan Saru, Saru?
Second.
Well, can't we just do them all together?
Okay, okay, you want to?
Yeah, we'll just take the, say you'd like to recommend, and then someone will follow. Okay.
I'd like to recommend Megan Saru for Zone 2. Do we do all of them?
No, just let each commissioner do their...
Okay, Zone 3?
Ted Hordakie, please. Am I right? Ted Hordakie, am I right on Zone 3?
Okay. Zone 5?
I'd like to nominate Melberton Robinson.
And at large, Mayor, Henry?
Who's the at large?
Grimshaw.
Martha Grimshaw.
Uh, I'd like, I'll take Martha Grimshaw.
And that's it?
So then the motion to appoint Susan, Megan, Ted, Melberton, and Martha Grimshaw.
Alright, you have a motion, you have a second?
Second.
Who's the second, Commissioner Reed? Okay.
No public comment?
And, uh.
I've had no one sign up for these items.
Okay, are any of these people here tonight? No, okay, alright, alright, and your name? Okay, alright, welcome, alright, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero. Thank you, thank you for your service, sir. Alright, uh, we'll move on to, uh, we didn't have anything pulled, so comments and inquiries from the City Commission, I think it starts with Commissioner Delgado.
Did we do eight H?
That's what I was thinking, did we, did we pull eight H?
Eight H was pulled from the.
It's pulled.
From the, no, it's pulled, I, I pulled it from the consent agenda before we approved the consent agenda, so.
Okay, I can go back and, I can go back and read it. Yep.
Okay.
Oh, actually, I don't have a resolution for that.
Eight H?
Eight H is the Avista Property Boardwalk Improvement Agreement.
Because it was a resolution on the consent agenda, I don't believe it needed to be continued to a date certain and they would just bring it back when.
That's all correct, this is just contract, we can pull it. This is the Boardwalk Improvement Agreement. It's not a PD or related to Land Development Code.
Okay, I did, it, it wasn't pulled when we approved the agenda, it was pulled when we approved the consent agenda, which is a little out of the ordinary, but in the applicant's request, according to this and his letter, actually, the letter just says the PD agreement, so, but that's fine, if we, if it doesn't need to be addressed, then.
It does not.
It was not, there was not, never a motion on it, so.
This is not applicant-driven, it's a contract with the city, so we can pull that.
Okay. Alright, uh, so, uh, commission comments, with Commissioner Delgado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the city manager evaluations, the long-awaited city manager evaluations. We've been waiting on a few people to complete theirs and now I think Commissioner May, uh, being on the commission, we should get her, we've asked for hers and we, I think that's scheduled to be done on February twentieth, the presentation on that. Uh, I, I believe that's when it's scheduled to be done. Okay, so that's, should be, uh, coming to fruition. I wanted to, obviously, we took a big step tonight as far as passing the ordinance for the panhandling. People tend to conflate the panhandling, the homeless issue, as we saw during public comment tonight. Obviously, we know that they're separate issues, not all who panhandle are homeless, not all who homeless are homeless panhandle. You know, first, the first step shelter continues to be, I think, our, our major push in that area and I know that, I drove by there this weekend, I see that things are moving along. I did want to put in front of the commission as a whole, the discussion of our, of our safe zone and whether we should have a discussion about moving it out or building something out by the first step shelter adjacent to it on some of that land. I've talked with the city commissioner, I mean, city manager about that and getting some estimates on what it would cost to create some space out there. I think that might be something that we need to look at, um, because while the first step is underway, I mean, there needs to be some thought about second and third steps down the road and what, what it looks like once we have that place up and running, because I think it'll very quickly come to capacity and I think that we should have a plan for triaging people who come there and then people who graduate need to have some solution. So I know that the First Step Shelter Board and Catholic Charities are working on their, um, curriculum and kind of their, their programs, but I think we as a city, in support of that shelter, need to also have some ideas for what we're gonna do, again, with our safety, our, our safe zone and then what we plan on doing, if we plan on doing anything out there for long-term housing. I don't know if that would be a location for the Soldier On program or something like that. So I don't know if the other commissioners want to have that discussion, I think it's something we should talk about now the first step is underway and in light of some of the steps we've taken today. I've also talked to the city manager about getting some wage information for the city and talking about fifteen cents, uh, fifteen dollars an hour and he, he reports that he thinks that, you know, we're, we're probably pretty close to that as a city, but I, I'm looking to get that information back and I know that we have some wage discussions coming up and I'd like to kind of be mindful of where we fall in that. I think that's a movement that cities are gonna be making and I think Daytona could be, uh, at the forefront of that. So I've asked to get that information and hopefully it'll be circulated in the next couple of weeks. I was assured it wasn't too, too hard to get that information. I got the wage tables, but there are hundreds of job descriptions and it was hard to kind of do that without more help from staff. So I appreciate the staff that's getting that together for me. And that's, that's really all I have tonight, so thank you all very much.
Thank you for those comments, I'd like to make a comment on two, a couple of those items. Uh, number one, um, I think I've mentioned before, I too think that, uh, we want to consider Soldier On, that is a location for Soldier On, uh, because we're, we're running the NIMBYism everywhere else in town, um, and so I've, I've said that in the past. I also, uh, am in favor of us, uh, doing the wage analysis. Fifteen dollars an hour, I think, would be a reasonable standard, even if we have to figure a way to, uh, gradually do it over several years, but the, the objective should be to move people to that, to that, uh, to that level of pay. And the third thing, the safe zone, um, I think that's something that we have to make a, a decision on. We have to also decide, you know, if it's a safe zone out there, whether we're asking First Step to, in some way, participate with that. But I do think it's a discussion that we need to have so that we can say to them and they can say to us what it is that we agree on or don't agree on. So, uh, I think that's a, a discussion worth having.
The last thing I, I saw, I was, I saw a special, I don't know if it was a Vice or one of those, like, video journalism kind of things, but they were talking about cities that, um, they have designated parking spaces that they make available for people who are living out of their car and I know that there are a lot of families with, and schoolchildren who have to live out of their cars and things like that. And again, you fall into the same kind of thing, a lot, a lot of people don't want to make their, their parking spaces open. But we have heard homeless individuals talk about the difficulty they have finding parking and that might be, that might be, um, an intermediary solution out by the, the First Step Shelter, if it can be graded to be a rudimentary parking lot. You know, if there's difficulty with places that are safe to park and that can be done with relative, you know, ease, that might be an intermediary step that, again, doesn't require us to open up parking lots that are gonna, you know, bring up the not in my backyard kind of philosophy. So I just think we have a lot of land out there and, uh, not a lot of people who are going to object to what we do out there. So I think it's a really unique opportunity for us to put that land into play. And, I mean, it's just, I mean, it's a brutal reality that nobody wants to volunteer to have this in their backyard. But we have six hundred plus acres out there that we can do a lot with. We already have the, you know, we've already spent the money to run the power and the infrastructure over that side. So I think we have a unique opportunity.
Let me ask you something about Soldier On, because I had a discussion with someone about it being out there. What is the infrastructure changes that we've made that would enable that to be a reality? Is that possible? So it's.
Can you use your microphone?
We have utilities, we've invested in utilities, so it's available out there. It would have to be extended to wherever the, the specific site is, but it's, uh, it is available on-site. Yeah, there's, there's site work that has to be done, raise the elevation, some of the areas, it would be necessary and then, you know, road access, we probably could use the same access as, um, as First Step uses. So, you know, that, those kind of things could happen and if you're talking about Soldier On or, depends on what you're talking about.
Soldier On, the one that was from Massachusetts, from Massachusetts.
Soldier On, then you're really talking about creating a village, that's what, that's what Soldier On does and that's, um, you get into multifamily structures and basically have to subdivide that property into, in an area that would, um, allow that to happen.
Uh, and Dr. Durman here, but who, could you, um, perhaps have a conversation with him and the two of you consider having call, call them if it's the.
Have them come back?
And have them, come back or have a preliminary conversation with them or have them come down?
Yeah.
You can talk to them and see if, what they think of the, of this possibility.
It's been, we, we talked to him a long time ago, I don't remember, uh, all of the things that we talked about, but I know one thing that's necessary is sort to be close to, uh, facilities that they would need to, to use, you know, the, um, grocery stores, stuff like that.
And that, that, that might be a challenge. But ask him to have a conversation with them, because he's very familiar with them and then come back and have them give us a report on what they've said. Because that's sort of the low-hanging fruit to the next step that we, and if that's not a, a convenient location, we need to start thinking as a city, what other locations do we have in our city and municipality that will make this a possibility?
Now we have, uh, over there by the new, uh, the police station, uh, the, the old police station site, as well as the lot across the street, that's another potential site.
Okay, alright.
We'll talk about that.
Yeah, yeah, she may not, yeah, she may think she may want something. That's why I'm just thinking that's easier, but they may not be agreeable to that.
There'd be other sites, I just did.
Let's, let's, let's start, because we have to help them, this is our community and they, they're very interested in coming. So let's get a short list, including that, including that, which doesn't sound like she wants, but whatever, and get a short list of things that we might, because we need to move on this, uh, because the, uh, shelter will be here and we don't want to drag our feet any longer on that.
Mr. Mayor, I did want to chime in, uh, you jumped the gun on me and concur with, um, Commissioner Delgado in regards to, um, establishing a real safe zone. I'm not sure, are they really using the Bellevue site still? I mean, I know we clear it by day, so I don't really drive by by night.
They're there.
They are there? And I do have concerns for those who do come before us and tell us that they don't have anywhere to park their cars. Uh, those are those who are, are obviously still striving to try to, to, uh, survive by day if they have a vehicle. So it would behoove us to have somewhere for them to park their vehicles at night. Uh, there's probably, um, I've seen videos where for some, that's the only safety that they have in the evening to lock themselves in their vehicles with their families. And, um, so I, I would like for us to delve into that a little bit further, so.
And the Bellevue area is not a... The Bellevue area is not a place for cars, is it? Is there, it's not allowed there?
I don't believe so.
I've seen cars on that lot.
I know, I, I've seen them there, but I thought that they weren't a place.
I just checked the, like, a lot of, a lot of people in there, uh, last week, there was some people in there, they leave during the day. Uh, there was some tents set up in the way back, but that's airport property, they were made aware of it on their property, they have to address that. But no, cars aren't allowed to park there, it's a, uh, it's, we're, we're trying to be potting your compliance, there's nothing about cars. We actually went above and beyond and put, uh, water out there, there's water access to water and, um, porta-johns. But it's not being used, uh, very, very.
Have they been so sparse?
No, yeah, I haven't seen any.
It's periodic, I mean, I've been there when they are there. It, lately, they were back in the threes when they were out on, on, on our.
In the clearing.
They're on the county's property.
Mr. Mayor, can I, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
What would be, the chief of three, what would be? What would be the, the difficulty in, in providing, you know, somewhat of a, not a, uh, in, in providing a parking space at night that had kind of the opposite rules of the shelter, that you could only be there from, you could only park your car from sundown to sunup and you had to move it during the day and having an officer go by there, you know, every so often, so that there is some police presence there for people safety, I mean, would that be a terrible burden on your police resources? I mean, is there, I understand safety's a concern, um, you know, liability's a concern, but, you know, is that so many people, the police are encountering, that there's difficult, that there's homeless families who need a place to park? I mean, could we address that out in one, in some parking lot or something?
Very few families.
The families that've got hope plates.
Yeah, they hope, I've seen very few families.
Which is great, and that's a secure area.
In the last couple of years, there's only one and they immediately, once we found out, there was a family, we took care of them, they got into low-income housing and got straight with the school and they went above and beyond and take care of that family.
There's only a lot of people parking Walmart, isn't Walmart, you know?
I think so, but Walmart kicks them out of there, I believe.
Okay.
The problem is, once you start creating that type of atmosphere, we don't want anything like we had like two years ago with the tents and everything set up, it was a disaster. Uh, same thing with Beach Street, so try to be fair, but how much do you have to do? I think sometimes, I think as Daytona, we go above and beyond with everything. I think other cities need to step up and do that also, I just think Daytona's not the dumping ground for everybody's problems and I think that's.
So you, you feel, uh, Mr. Attorney, that the safe zone that we have out there, is potting your compliant?
Uh, yes, it is potting your compliant, potting your really has very few requirements, um, in terms of what must be provided out there. So you have the water, you, you have some basic amenities.
Which we don't have to do, but we are doing that to go above and beyond.
Right, now there, there is liability that comes with that, of course, when you allow people to congregate, uh, without any sort of supervision. So, you know, I think the chief is aware of that as well.
So we, we have to be careful about, you know, first step, because one of the things that we don't want to do is become the place where everyone feels as though, you know, we're potting your compliant, but, you know, and I've said this to the First Step Shelter Board, but, you know, but they're not potting your compliant. The other municipalities.
Right.
And, uh, we're the only one that's, you know, I, I'm not saying that they're not or they, they are.
They're not.
But, but, but that's not, you know, I don't want to create a political football here, I still have to work with the board. But whether they are or not, it's not, that's not our responsibility to address. Uh, and if, if, you know, we are potting your compliant, um, you know, we're, we're in the process of building a shelter. So we want to be careful not to create something that is gonna take more of the onus of, of this burden on us that we've already taken more than any other area in, in the air, in community.
Let me just address one thing that kind of came up and, um, when someone goes to First Step Shelter, if they're under the influence of alcohol or drugs, they will not be let in. Now, the idea, you don't kick them back out, they have a holding area that they're supposed to be in at that site until they get to the point they are dry and they can come in the facility. But they can't let them in if they're under the influence of anything. But that location is supposed to have its own, uh, compound area for that to occur.
And if I can add, Mr. Chisholm, the jail just recently, Mark Flowers, he's great, the director out there, is really working very well with us. They're creating an area inside the jail now where they will take intoxicated people. And when he, when they reach their, they're gonna be taking in intoxicated people now and watching them. Where before, if we, we were stuck, if Stuart Marshman couldn't take them, what are you gonna do with them, try to find a place for them to go? They're re-organizing out, they're restructuring and, and writing a new, writing a new policy to work with the Volusia Flag, the police chiefs, where they're gonna take intoxicated people in, which is gonna help immensely. Same thing with people that are injured, they're gonna, they're, you know, no more playing games, well, you gotta take them to Halifax and do the runaround. It's, the, the dialogue, lines of communication opened up really well and it's, it's really helping.
That's great.
See, the shelter is supposed to be, once they get to the point they can be admitted, then they have medical, they have counseling, they have all kinds of assistance and, you know, for those individuals. And that's the whole idea, they can't help them until they become, uh, sober, but they do have the ability to serve them once that, once that occurs, or they should be.
But I think for a safe zone, they're, they have to be able to be taken as they, as they are.
Yes.
So that's, that's the distinction that, you know, and, and so I'm, I'm, my, I'm just thinking aloud, if we, if there's already gonna be a, an area set aside outside First Step Shelter for that triage portion, would it really cost the city a whole lot to build onto that and add some space there and call it our safe zone where it's already, you know, there's gonna be police presence, there's gonna be a lot of people coming and going? I just feel like that might be a good conversation to have and get an idea of what it, what it's gonna cost and what, you know, that, that's, that's all. I just want to find out what those options are and if it turns out to be unworkable, it's unworkable. But I, I don't think that our current shelter, our current safe zone is optimal, given what will be in place at the First Step Shelter. I think it's, you know, probably we should put those two things in close proximity and I agree, I don't want us to be a repository for all the other cities, uh, you know, issues, but at the same time, if we're gonna do something, let's do it right, which is what we're doing. And, you know, if it doesn't cost a fortune to do, it's consistent with our mission statement and our goals of what we've done in the first place. You know, I, I think we just do a good job and keep doing a good job of it, I don't think we should say, ah, you know, if it's not a tremendous burden, I think it's consistent with what the policy we've set with the First Step Shelter and all the work we've been doing for the last decade, and all you guys have been doing for the last decade. So I think, I think it's worth at least investigating, what ultimately happens, you know, I have no idea. And we may find out it's not workable, I just don't know the answers and I don't want to close my mind to the possibility. It just seems like a good, it seems like worth, we should investigate, that's all, so, I appreciate your acknowledgement.
So what do you, well, well, let's make sure that we finish. You want to have a discussion or do we want to get some pricing or preliminary possible plan? Well, I mean, because.
Well, I don't want to, you know, sh, uh, you know, drag everyone along down a path they don't want to go, but I would love to know, yeah, what, what would it cost to build or to have some semblance of a safe zone out by the First Step Shelter? And is that something that the commission wants to do and, and come up with a, you know? And I, I think that in a sense is having some kind of plan, but if the rest of the commission doesn't want to do that, then, you know, I understand that too. So I, I don't know the best way democratically to do that.
Okay, he, he's gonna get some information, but this is what we all, I think we've said this, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chief.
And there's no need to slow down on this, this is an issue that we want to have a comprehensive approach to addressing. So I'm all for having all of the information and then making decisions, so I don't disagree with you. I was just throwing that other part out to say that I don't want us to.
To lose track of.
To lose track of, and also I don't want other cities to think that that's our responsibility for them.
Right.
But I want to do what's best for us and I want us to have a discussion and to put the facts out there and then make a decision. So we'll let, uh, allow you to bring us some information back.
And Mr. Mayor, we're talking about a safe zone, a dust-to-dawn facility, no presence during the day, correct? Because if not, we're gonna have a tent city.
That's what I was just, yeah, I was about it.
So we're, is that correct?
Right, we're talking about the, the current safe zone.
I'm just, I'm, I'm just trying to make sure I understand the, the parameters of this, because to price it out, we're talking about having to, you know, you know, a, a safe zone, we, we have to get them wa, you know, well, we don't have to get them water, but it'd be nice for us to get them water out there someplace. I honestly don't think anybody would go, you know, I mean, I don't think people like going out to, to the airport, you know, where it is now. You put it another ten minutes out, I'm not sure.
Real cheap to build.
I don't, I, well, it may just be clearing the land and, and then, and then some fill, so maybe a couple hundred grand, which.
I don't, I, well, it may just be clearing the land and, and then, and then some fill, so maybe a couple hundred grand, which I honestly don't think is worth spending if we're going to, if, because I don't think anybody would go. You know, plus the security would be probably a recurring expense of another couple hundred grand. So a couple hundred grand to get it open, a couple hundred a year, you know, we're upside down as it is with the shelter based on the overruns with the construction. So, you know, if, if the one near the airport was, was being heavily utilized, I might feel a little different, but, you know, um, I, I just, I'm not, I don't think there's a need.
Okay.
But I do like the idea of pursuing some more soldier-on conversation about whether there might be an opportunity there.
Part of me thinks clustering all those things together may have an additive effect when all the, that there's a lot of potential services there, uh, that, that might be, have a positive effect, or it may have the opposite, I don't know, I'm not a sociologist, so I don't...
You know, separating the criminal homeless from the homeless is something that I, that I would like to see, and I worry that if you get the safe zone next to what really is our inpatient facility, that you may be bringing those two back together.
That's certainly possible, I just don't know the answer.
Yeah, and I think the folks at Catholic Charities probably do know the answer. So, you know, I think there's some...
Let, let's just look at, there's, uh, I'm very careful about my company, I think, just creating that mix, exactly what... Creating a mix where you have, um, those who are homeless who really needs assistance to, the criminal element come in and take advantage of them, at the same time, we had that. We had it over here on, on Beach Street, and, um, and we moved the safe zone out near the airport. And that began to happen when we allowed them to put tents up and stay there more than, more than just overnight. So once we eliminate the, those problems, we eliminate the availability of drugs and other issues that were showing up in those safe zones. So, um, whatever we do, we've got to be very careful that we don't allow that to occur again.
I have a question, rarely is the Soljaan proposed to go.
Uh, well, it wasn't ever proposed, but they, uh, had a, uh, ideal property for them was at, uh, George Ingram, um, just adjacent to the Pine Haven, uh, property. So that was what they thought was ideal. Uh, of course, many of the residents decided that they didn't want that, so that's why that did not come to any, any light. There were a couple other properties also that, that I think is possible. You waving back there at us? Okay, 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 alright, uh... Any other? Okay, do you have any other comments? Just, he'll, he'll give us some, uh, uh, create some information for us. Commissioner May?
I made a mistake and I actually retract myself from it, but I'm hoping you can help me back out.
We can't hear you.
I made a mistake, please back out, it's impossible, can you hear me okay?
Seems like her mic getting...
Times, I mean, come on, do you want to just keep that in public record, all right? So, I made a mistake, this is the mistake I made, I misread 10G. And I'm, I'm going to get myself out of it, if I can get myself out of it, I would like to get myself out. 10G. Which is the Beautification Tree Advisory Board appointment.
G, what, what was your mistake?
My mistake was this, I misread it, I assumed that the first three people were already on the board and they were automatically reappointed, not that I had to reappoint them. So while I love Mr. Hornadecki and I appreciate him applying, I, I actually would like to reappoint Jamie Newman, I made a mistake in reading it. Can I do that?
You can make a motion for reconsideration.
Could I please, because I did make a mistake. Mr. Newman does a fantastic job, he's diligent, he's out there digging the roses, and I made a mistake in reading it.
Uh, you'd need to make a motion for reconsideration, there'd be a second.
Thank you so much, can I do it now? I would like to make a motion for reconsideration, otherwise I would not be able to sleep tonight.
Second.
I have a second, I have a third, okay. We have a motion from Commissioner May, we have a second from Commissioner Gilliland.
I love you, but I can't do it. Thank you so much.
Do I need to read the resolution into it, or?
No, we, we'll just redo the motion, uh, now that we've got the motion of reconsideration. Um, now you can make a new motion if that was approved, so now if we can make a new motion for your new appointment, we'll need public comment and then...
Thank you so much, I would please...
We got to wait, we got to vote on the...
On the motion to reconsider.
All right, we have a motion to reconsider, and a second to reconsider. All those in favor, well, will you take public comment on that?
Not on the reconsideration.
Okay.
Take it on the final vote.
Okay, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye, thank you.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries, seven zero. Okay, now we have a motion to reconsider.
All right, please, could I please make a motion to reconsider Jamie Newman for the beautification for Zone Three?
This would be a motion to appoint.
To appoint, sorry, to appoint for Zone Three.
Second.
Thank you.
We have a motion and we have a second, um, although, uh, we'll take public comment if there's any... No public comment?
Thank you.
Yes, sir, you want to comment?
Thank you for being so gracious, thank you.
There's another hand, Mr. Mayor, there's another hand.
Another hand? Come forward if you have a comment.
No, no, no.
No. You need to come forward and, come on this thing and, or say your name.
That's okay. On this item, man.
This is about the appointment of Jamie Newman.
This is on the appointment, yeah, on the beautification, yeah. Oh, okay, go ahead.
To the mic.
Go ahead, sorry. Sorry.
For the tree beautification, um, have you guys ever considered putting, like, trees that produce fruit? So maybe the kids that don't have all the food in their house are able to get it, like in Miami, they have like tree, like starfruit trees, banana trees and stuff? And I see, and I've seen kids, you know, walking from home, getting fruits and being able to eat it.
This, I believe, is on the appointment, so if you have something on the appointment of Mr. Newman, or not on the board itself, but on the appointment. Okay, that's okay.
Yeah, thank you, it's all right, it's a...
Okay, I can sleep, thank you.
All right, we have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor, uh, appointing Mr. Newman, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries, seven zero, and it's okay.
Okay, thank you so much, that was the first item, I'm not done, okay. Second item. Um, I, I took your directive very seriously about the Residents First Program, and I would very much like to know if we could get, uh, more information on the program or have some sort of workshop on it or information session on it, so we can move forward on it.
Okay, let me ask you, um, since you read the information, why don't you meet with him?
Okay.
You all want to set a date for a workshop and then we can, I, I recommend everyone talk with him because...
I have.
So you know, you have...
I have, yes, sir.
So I'm, I'm ready to, I'm already ready to support it, so I know where I am.
I've met with him as well.
So, do we need a workshop?
Yes.
Yes.
Because we may have some extra options, just more information to consider.
All right, so what, what, let's schedule a date for a workshop. We don't have to schedule it now, but we'll schedule it, we can have it. April. Well, because I got, we got a couple other workshops, so wouldn't we do it?
Mr. Mayor, what was the, um, we talked about doing something a half a day Saturday. Can we nip all of these things out the bud? What was that for?
That's for, uh, we're going to do a workshop on, um, health issues. And the reason that I was on a Saturday was because there was a session there from the Health Department where we could come in, come in with...
I remember.
Senior staff and experience, uh, some of the conditions of, uh, some of the reasons that our people, uh, have such poor health.
I recall now. It's something like what we used to, what we did in, um... Daytona.
Sort of poverty simulation.
Yeah, it's like... Well, I did it in Leadership Daytona, I know what you're talking about, I know we did it now.
Yeah, and have several different types of ways of doing it, some for poverty, for homeless. Um, so what we'll do is let's do that one. Uh, you said, April?
Yes, April, because we got March.
First meeting, first time, early April, because then we have to do one on the, um, a couple other things, the, uh, affordable housing. But let's deal with that first, you know, affordable housing after that, okay?
So the first meeting in April is April third.
Well, I mean, let's do it early, the, uh, workshop, I don't care if we do it on the day of the meeting, early April, okay? All right, any other issues?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you for doing that, and I think that's very good. I think it's helpful when things come up and we initiate, we push it and say, this is what we want, that, that needs to happen.
Thank you.
Right here.
Uh, let's see, a question on that, on that front. Uh, so when we very first started this, we were looking at a county's ordinance in South Florida that had a requirement that city contracts that didn't use state or federal funding were going to companies that employed a certain percentage or something, you know, of residents of that county. Um, and then it drifted over into this disadvantaged worker issue, of which we identified, there was about two dozen in this city, Daytona Beach. Are we going, are we back at the, the residents? Are we still, is this a policy related to those two dozen people that are disadvantaged?
So back several months ago, we retained Dr. Jones, an economist, who looked at actually both issues, overall unemployment within the city and unemployment within the segment, uh, of the population that is a disadvantaged worker, which, uh, he defined as those below a certain poverty level, uh, below a certain education level, um, or on disability. So you can look at both of those options in terms of, of your regulations, however, you need to be aware, of course, that your regulations have to be, uh, addressed to a particular problem, which is identified by Dr. Jones. Um, and so he gives you comparative unemployment rates, for instance, and I believe his ultimate determination was that we were on parity with the other, um, local, um, and state and federal, uh, numbers. So, um, you've really got to look at that data and see how your regulations might be tuned, uh, to those disparities, if any.
So, so, well, when we say Residents First, we're talking about an ordinance to address the two dozen people that, out of the 65,000 who live here, that are disadvantaged workers.
And that's the part I'm unsure of.
Correct, is that correct?
Well, that's, that's, whether it's two dozen today, tomorrow might be 10 dozen, so it's a policy that I think should be, we need to consider putting in place. So that we say, this is the community that this, we live in, these are the values that we support. So in part, for me, it's about a value that we support, disposition that we want to...
I, I agree, I just want to make sure I didn't somehow get off on a different path than, than everyone else. You know, and, and then, and actually, when we get to a solution, it may not be a policy...
No.
Of ours, it might be a partnership with other organizations in Daytona Beach to try and help those folks, um, you know, improve their quality of life, is really what I think what our end goal is.
Commissioner Gilliland along those lines, when I read it, I did some other research, and I'm heading toward partnership, and so that's where, I just wanted to open the conversation, see where we are, and then bring in some other resources that may be new to the community that we may not all know about, but that exist.
And that's what the workshop will do for us, you all.
Yep. Paula, you're not wearing a wash.
No, but we still got to hear from the people too. Y'all talking about something we're talking about, we're going to talk about later.
But I can't ask you that, except we're in here.
Yeah, we can't ever talk to each other, so you, you, you've got to, uh...
All right, no. Uh, let's see, fifteen dollars an hour is, is a problem, because we start our police and firefighters at about 16, 17? So you're talking about taking somebody who's, you know, just out of high school with no work experience and putting them almost on par with an entry-level firefighter, police officer. So if we're going to have that conversation, we need to talk about what is going to be a, what I believe a significant increase in our cost of labor, because we need to get our police officers and firefighters in particular up to something that's a little more competitive with Central Florida, because I don't believe, and I've said this at a lot of strategic planning sessions over the years, I don't, I don't think we're there, but...
That's why I think that that, that will address all of this, and it might not be what we think. The workshop will be exciting.
Well...
I wanted to address that, but okay.
I think we're talking about, with the pension increase, I think we're talking about, you know, maybe five million a year, is what we're talking about. Which is a lot of money. So, it's a mill and a half, so, um, to be able to do, to be able to bring everybody up, because remember, if we just take the entry up, then we get the compression problem again, so we got to take everybody who's, all police officers, all firefighters are going to go, have to go up a couple thousand bucks at least, so that we can raise the floor for that entry-level, fresh-out-high-school person and put them at fifteen dollars an hour.
No, there's a lot of ways to address this, and it doesn't have to be done over, uh, overnight, it can be done, as I suggested earlier, over a period of time, and you got to look at what everybody's already making. Let's look at what we're, where we are...
Yep.
And then look at it and see if it's a conceivable, reachable objective. My feeling is, and I said this on, uh, Martin Luther King, uh, Day to a group of people that I was addressing, I think that if we are going to want our employers to pay people a working wage as a city, we need to figure out a way to embrace that ourselves. So it, to me, it doesn't have to be overnight, but it's, it, it needs to be something that we're planning and working towards doing, but we can't really make any informed decision without an, the analysis that I think he was talking about.
Agreed.
You got to get the information.
And I, I agree with you a hundred percent, I mean, I, I think we should pay those, those groups more, and that was, I mean, I think a rising tide should lift all boats, and I agree with you, it'd be a tremendous detriment to morale if you've been here 20 years and someone brand-new starts, you know, 95% of what, that certainly wasn't my intent, I just wanted to gather information. Because when I looked at those wage sheets, a lot of it, there's built-in overtime, there, it's, it's very hard to compare to, some of those positions to each other, to see what your effective hourly rate is, because there's time and a half and all these different things. So I just wanted to see the information, and again, I'm not, not prejudging the situation, but I think it's a conversation, as the mayor says, that we should kind of declare as a policy goal, as a leadership goal for, but again, I just want to see what the actual cost is going to be.
I absolutely agree with this conversation that we should, it's worth having.
And the, the organizations that I'm thinking about are not suggesting starting at fifteen dollars an hour, but they are an organization that could help to create a program for us that would work with us, where it's not something we're necessarily doing.
I, I'm actually talking about Aaron's thing about having a city minimum wage of fifteen dollars an hour, so...
I think, I think we all, we all just wait till we get some information. We're all talking about a lot of things that have, uh, have implications, but, uh, none of us know, I don't, I personally don't know exactly how it impacts all of the wage structures we have, but it, it has potential for, um, creating some real concerns in, in the end, some financial concerns, but, um, let's find the facts first, is the best thing.
Yep. I don't want Paula yelling at me anymore, so I'm going to stop.
No, you don't have to stop, because I love to talk and have a good discussion about things, I don't care when we have it. Commissioner Hendry?
Two things I want to talk about, which is, um, transitional housing for when people come out of the shelter, because I am really, really concerned, and I've had some people to talk to me about being concerned about when they leave the shelter. Does the process start all over, you leave the shelter, you go back to being homeless because you've not had transitional housing? Um, and so that is one thing that I would really like for us to focus on, in addition to the affordable housing. I know that we are talking about affordable housing as a commission now, and we're looking forward to, I'm looking forward to working with, on that and, uh, strategic planning. But I do want to mention that, um, there are many models that I believe that we could use to get affordable housing for our, our residents. Detroit uses the tiny home model, and I just want to put this out there, um, they have built, and in, uh, in Detroit, it's one of the less wealthy cities in the country, you know, we know that. Um, but they have used this tiny homes model, where residents who make less than $10,000 a year have really nice homes and, and they own those homes. At the end of their $10,000, af- after they finish paying for the home, they own it at the end. And, um, I was thinking, you know, we have so much land and, and some of the land that we have, I don't see why we can't figure out a way to use that kind of model, and they're even changing their model now to where they've used the tiny homes for, you know, one or two people, and now they're going to have tiny homes for maybe three to four family-sized tiny homes. And they have beautiful communities where, um, they're using that model, and people who are your fast-food workers, who don't make as much, they're able to obtain the goal of homeownership. And I always wonder, you know, if you're only making $10 an hour, how are you ever going to be able to achieve that goal of homeownership? And I think that the way, one of the ways that we can change the trajectory of affordable housing is to find a, a market like that, whether we partner with, um, Habitat for Humanity, whether we partner with some of these organizations, other organizations. Um, I know that there are rules as far as where a tiny home could, uh, the, the size of home that we could have in Daytona Beach, I know I've talked to city manager about that, but he did... I know I've talked to city manager about that, but he did inform me that if, if we had a, a community of all the same-sized homes, they could be in a community together. And that is something that I think we could really look at. They're very inexpensive to build, and then it is going to give people who are never going to move past that eight, $10, $12, $13, um, $13, the opportunity to actually own their homes. And I think we, we could really move the city in a different direction if we start focusing on that group of people, not your middle class. I'm talking about your, your less wealthy, boots-on-the-ground families who I think should have the opportunity to, to achieve the American dream of homeownership. And I think that's something that we could do, and I think that's something that with us partnering with other people and other, other organizations can be very attainable. So that is something that I would really like to look at, and look at what land we have available that we could do something like that. We're talking about things that we could do with, with the land that we have. I'm thinking that's one, one of the things that we could use it for. Also, I would very much like to, to, to go back to, I've still been thinking about the study with the 32114 zone being the less, the, the least healthy zone in the county. And I know that, we talked about that before, and I know Rob was saying that, you know, there's not, you know, we just can't put all our money into making that zone healthy. But I do think that there are some things that we can do, and I know when we have our health workshop, those are some things, some things that I would like to look at as well, as what we can do to, to combat that zone and, and the health issues that that zone is facing. And I think with just a little bit more effort and partnering with some of the other organizations that are out there, there is some more that can be done to tackle that issue in the 32114 area. I, to me, that just bothers me, that, that is, that, that Daytona Beach has the least healthy area in the county. And, and I'd like to, I'd like to really go back to that, and I'd like to focus on that in pre-planning. Couple more things, folks. I would also, and, and I'm also in, in agreement with, with Rob that, that the firefighters, I, I would like to see them, I know we just, just recently in this last cycle, they got a raise, but I still don't, I, I've been researching, and I don't, I still don't believe that they're on par with other communities, even communities right here, and even in this tri-county area, they're not on par. And I think, I, I would like to look ahead and see what we can plan to do in, in the coming future on making sure we, we have their pay on par for, for the services they provide. Lastly, two more things, Paula. I would like to pay for the YSG, for the BCU Alumni Association, for a health event that they're having. And also Derbyshire Park, I'd like to pay for Derbyshire Park for the annual Easter Festival by the wonderful ladies of the Eastern Star, who do a fantastic job of, of serving 300 to 400 children every year with their Easter eggs. So I want to make sure that I pay for that as well.
Do you have a dollar amount for those, or?
Whatever the fee for, I will have a fee, because I don't know what the fee is for to rent the YSG gym in Derbyshire Park. Yes, and, and you know what? She called me, and are they now requiring them to have insurance for the YSG?
I don't know, because I don't know what they're doing. There is an application process they should go through.
Right. She's, she's finished all of that, but I guess whoever Luna is, has told them that they needed permission from me to process it.
From you?
To process it for me to pay for it. So it, they've, they've got new rules. So, so the new rules now are that the commissioner that's going to pay for it has to write a letter to them saying that they're going to pay for it. I, I don't think, I think that's a bit much. So I'm just going to tell you that I'm paying for it, and you can go from there, however you want to handle it.
Let me find out what's going on, and we'll get back to you.
From the Bike Week Funds.
And the letter for the, for the majesty, Chapter 565, if you look at what I submitted, because I donated 150 to them, that record, she can, you can get that from there. Those ladies are here this evening.
Yes, they're here.
If you want to know what the costs were that were associated with them, yeah, I submitted a letter for, in my Bike Week Funds, so Pat would have that information.
Okay.
No, sir, for the other that she wants to submit.
How much was, she's here.
Yes.
How much, how much was the fee?
Can you, can you come up, you know, the fee for the rental of the facility?
Is Jennifer up there? Okay, do you know the fee?
I'm not, I'm sure, I know last week it was around 300, it was a change, it was a habit. I'm not sure if it was correct, um, but I know it was about 500 dollars, because we get a deposit and a, um, application fee. The application is submitted.
Yes, it's been submitted. For both, for both events. That's it for me.
Can I, can I ask a question? Mayor, with regard to the health issue, when we go to that seminar, is it an informational workshop, or just the county health department? Like, what is it? Is it actually, we can bring ideas to the table?
We can bring ideas to the table.
We can bring ideas, okay.
The objective is that they would also present to us what, and then the health department director is going to come and present to us next week.
Okay.
So we can have a quick conversation with her about what we want from them to help us moving forward in that workshop, as well as ideas that we might have
Okay.
as a community. Okay?
Well, I'll piggyback.
Yes, ma'am.
First, I'll piggyback on what has been said. We've often heard from our firemen how we've got the best firemen in town, perhaps even in the state, because after we train them, we recruit them and train them, other cities come and take them from us, because we have the best of the best. So we definitely want to make sure that we keep the young men and women that we've trained that, that keep our city safe. I'd like to know if we have scheduled our next CRA meeting, because I know we canceled this evening. Do we know when the next one is, or are they once a month, or?
Usually once a month.
Once a month?
Yes, provided they got good, they have it.
All right. So...
If that TIF item comes back, then it'll come back. We'll have to have a CRA that same meeting. The March 6th, I believe it was?
All right.
I think it'll go continue to?
If possible, could that other item be on there as well? Because it's been since November, that I mentioned yesterday, the Thurman House?
Oh.
All right.
I found it, I can talk to you about it.
Okay, very good. The Mayor's Fitness Challenge is on and popping, and I am striving to win first, no less than second place. Where's Vanessa? All right? I want you to know that last week, several community leaders joined me for the African-American Read at Turriti Small, and I'm expecting a letter from them. They are bringing in a, a renowned author to read to the children, and they asked all of us that were present for assistance to bring in other children from the local city schools, so that the children can hear from this author and get books from this author. So once my letter comes, I have committed a donation of $200 for my Bike Week Funds. I think it would be awesome for these children to hear and to actually hear an author, to sit and hear the author read their book to them, and just to have that experience. So that's Turriti Small. I don't know who the author is. They named the person?
Are you making a contribution?
Yes, to Turriti Small.
Okay, $250 to Turriti?
200.
200?
Yeah, I know what I got left. I'm, I'm, I'm down to $30 by the time I get through. And then also, very modest, Commissioner May, but on Saturday evening, Sigma Gamma Row had their second annual African fashion show, and I was able to purchase a table. Assistant City Manager Betty Goodman was my guest, and what I did was, when I didn't fill the table with adults, I allowed the undergrads of Sigma Gamma Row to join us, because as you know, all of us who've gone to college, college students don't always have money, and they can't come to things that alumni members always host. And on that evening, they also recognized community women of our city, and they recognized Commissioner May. So she was honored that evening, so it was nice to have a colleague to be honored that night. And for them, I, my recognition for them is already in my Bike Week Funds, but I wanted to, to let you all know that she was recognized that evening. That concludes my comments, and Happy Valentine's Day!
Awesome.
I think everybody else.
Some great stuff tonight, and you have to have ideas, you have to put them out there. This is the only time that we can talk to each other, so, about city business. I think tiny houses, a great idea to consider as we consider affordable housing. So I, I think that should be a part of that discussion when it comes up, and I think May might be a good time for that. Keats Street, we're going to have, next Thursday at 4 o'clock, I'm going to have, host a meeting for which I invite the public to email me to join a committee that will recommend names for a new clinic. The, the health department will be relocating or locating a clinic to Keats Street. And so we will meet at 4 o'clock downstairs. Please email me at henryd@codb.us, because the committee is growing quickly, and we just want a certain number of people. We don't want to overdo it, but we'll come together and try to come up with a list of names that we can give to them, and they'll make a decision out of two or three. We'll give them a, a list in short order. As Commissioner Reed said, the Mayor's Fitness Challenge is moving along, and participation has been phenomenal, and the activities have been great. So it's not too late, we're only in our third week. In addition to working out twice a week, we've had, asked each participant to add a third day of workout. Can never work out too much. And we have also asked people to eliminate candy, soda, and today, fried food. We haven't gotten the cookies yet, so I'm eating, still eating cookies. But that'll probably be next week, it'll be sugar. Sugar's my weakness. And so we've asked that they add those things, and then in a few weeks, we will also add sleep, ask people to get a certain amount of sleep. So, you know, don't give it up. Need to add a little more to it. So, but it's still not too late to join us, and we're having a great time. That concludes my comments. Mr. Manager? All right, we'll meet, move to the public in just a minute. This meeting is officially adjourned.
Now move on to item number four, which is approval of the minutes of the December 19, 2018 Food Truck Workshop. Second.
We'll take a motion from Commissioner Gilliland, and a second from Commissioner Treger. Do we have any questions or corrections to the minutes? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0. We'll now move on to our agenda approval. If there are any changes, our city manager will address them at this time.
We have several changes, Mr. Mayor. First, let's continue the Agenda Item 8H, Avista Properties. Agenda Item 8I is just a correction that, say, contribution to Race Foundation. Continue Item 9B, Preserve at LPGA. Continue Item 9C, Preserve at LPGA, Rezoning. Continue 9F, Velavita Estates, Rezoning. Pull Item 9H, Williamson Ridge Neighborhood, Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Continue Item 10A, Avista, Rezoning. Pull Item 10B, LPGA, Williamson Ridge, Rezoning.
So Bob, can we continue those items at this point, or they need to be?
Normally, we'll read those if the applicant, if they're here, would confirm that it should be continued at their request. So on those particular items, we'll read those.
Okay, and then Item 8H, which is on the consent agenda, when we get to approval of consent agenda, we'll pull that one off and then continue it.
Okay, then I make a motion to approve the agenda with the correction to Item 8A, the pulling of Item 9H, and the pulling of Item 10B.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Gilliland, a second from Commissioner Delgado.
Was that 8H or 8I? I mean, 8A, did you say?
I'm sorry, H. So it's the correction to 8I, Commissioner Henry's donation, and then pulling 9H and 10B.
Okay.
Is that right? Means the other five are all continuances?
Okay, that's right. All right, we, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
Okay, moving on to item number six, we have no presentations tonight. Item number 9E is the corresponding item to the previous item. It's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division Code of Ordnance and Tax Amendment, Mobile Food Vending. This is an ordinance on second reading, public hearing. An ordinance amending the City Code of Ordnance, creating Chapter 103, Mobile Food Vendors, establishing regulations and licensing requirements for mobile food vending, providing for regulations as set on February 1st, 2020, repealing all ordinances in conflict here with and providing an effective date.
So we'll need the same motion, I guess?
Same motion to continue to March 20th, please?
Second.
All right, we have a motion for continuance and a second. There are no further comments from the commission. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
Moving on to item number nine, which is public hearings. Item number 9A is the Legal Department Panhandling Ordinance. It's an ordinance on second reading, public hearing. An ordinance of the City of Daytona Beach, Florida, repealing Article 1, Article 3, Article 4, and Article 6 of Chapter 66, Peddlers, Solicitors, Canvassers, and Itinerant Vendors City Code, replacing Article 1 of Chapter 66 City Code, providing for findings and intent, providing for prohibited conduct and proximity and location restrictions for solicitation, panhandling, or begging, providing for penalties, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, and providing for an effective date. Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Delgado, and a motion from Commissioner Reed, and we have speakers. But before we hear from our speakers, Mr. Khan would like to come, and I will also address the speakers just before Mr. Khan. Go ahead, sir. Or just after Mr. Khan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
And commissioners, I promise, as I promised the mayor last time, that we won't be here for three hours.
Three?
Won't be here for four minutes. Okay, just a brief presentation on second reading. First of all, in, this is, I just wanted to thank you for the honor and privilege of serving and getting to know Mr. Mayor and commissioners. Your wonderful city. I've been up here about a dozen times and talked to people of all manners of work and life, and learned a lot about Daytona Beach, and understand why you love the city so. So I want to start by thanking you. I also want to thank some of the people, and I've done this before, and some in writing, it's public record anyway, but it's incumbent upon me to, again, thank you for the staff and the people who are in your employ, who have supported this effort, which was monumental. And I want to thank Chief Capri for the use of his personnel, thank J.T. Thomas for his untiring efforts in behalf, and the many officers who have testified, and whom I've also interviewed, and who I've dealt with. Worthy public servants all. I want to thank John Clary, and the IT Department, and Pratima, and Ed and Tom, because the task I laid before them was very difficult, as I've said in writing and publicly, in gathering data to support the buffers, and in the precision that I've never seen, really. And I want to, I want to thank them. I also want to thank some people that I haven't thanked yet in, in writing, and, and that is the office staff that support... And, and that is the office staff that supports you directly. Letitia, the clerk, who's been nothing but kind to me. Bobby, Pam, Shirley, and others that I know I'm gonna forget, but they've all been kind to me in every visit I've taken here. I want to thank Mr. Jagger. And specifically, I want to say that what he's let me do is inestimable in value. He's not micromanaged me, he's let me do my job. And, and that's what I, I wanted to say. I also wanted to thank Jim Cameron, who's been my point man throughout this, your Vice President of your Regional Chamber. Moving into the substance of what I want to tell you tonight, keeping at a three-minute time limit. I wanted to say also, thank you for the opportunity of meeting you all personally, individually, and individually, and answering any questions that you may have. Because the First Amendment is at the heart of why we're all here today. And as I've said from the first, panhandlers have First Amendment rights too. The ordinances regulating them preserve their First Amendment rights. And you can ordn, you can regulate time, by time, place, and manner of regulation, every First Amendment speech, period. And so it's important that we don't, and we haven't clutter up the record. And that's why I think that over the last six months, any and all questions that you've had, hopefully have been this point, up or down, because no one can presume a vote, been answered. So thank you for not cluttering up the record, and I appreciate that. Lastly, I want to present for my next numbered exhibit to the clerk, the transcript of proceedings on January 23rd, 2019. And before I do that, I would also, in anticipation, Madam Coreporter and Mr. Mayor, like to also include the transcript of this meeting, whenever it gets ready, as the last numbered exhibit. So you have all of the transcripts now of every meeting, and I want to include that. So may I approach, Mr. Mayor? And lastly, on behalf of everybody's First Amendment rights, what I wish for this city is when I drive up here to inspect the effect of the ordinance gratis, I might add. I, I want to say that I only hope that I can, that, that you all can echo what Chief Fox told me on vacation when I was visiting Cooperstown to fulfill my wife's lifelong dream of seeing the Baseball Hall of Fame, when he said to me that my ordinance had made a night and day difference in the town. And I only hope that for you, and I praise all of you officials who actually tested that premise and went up to visit St. Augustine. I appreciate that from you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity of serving your wonderful city and getting to know it. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, sir. And thank you for the succinct commentary tonight. I want to say that I realize that we have a number of people who want to speak to this item. I would remind you that we have listened, however painful it has been, to about eight hours of testimony. And it has been the most challenging of all the things that I have ever had to hear, including the many, many personal attacks that I have received. This was way beyond anything like that for us. I have, while I do not presume a vote, yea or nay, on this item from my colleagues, but I have not heard any sense of obstinacy from this Commission other than a continued commitment to helping our city to develop a multi-pronged, complete approach to addressing issues that are related to this item, i.e. homelessness, panhandling. And we want to respect everyone's rights in doing so. But I just would have you who are coming to speak to us to be cognizant of that fact. And finally, the sooner we can vote on this, the sooner we can begin to execute the plan. So, Madam Clerk?
My first speaker is John Nicholson and on deck is Dino Pastpalakis. Sorry, Dino.
John Nicholson, 413 North Grandview Avenue. I noticed during, when we were talking on the panhandling, they found the needles, they found this, they knew this to happen. My neighbor called, we had problem with drug dealers across the street for years now. She said they were back, sat on her porch. I reported no less than five times to the cops, the car number, et cetera. Walked across the street after the deal was done, walked into the dumpster area. Needle in the spoon, came out, put in his arm. Absolutely, they're doing drugs, period. Not just remnants. Defecating. I walk three times a day, walking along the seagrapes next to Wyndham. Guy walks back, he's squatting down, come back on my walk, it's there, all right? These are not maybe sort of, they absolutely are. And I understand that it's the panhandlers. I walk three times a day, I know who's sleeping and I know who's panhandling. They barely change their clothing. So if they're with a blonde hair, ponytail, hat, vet, sitting on the arches, whatever, and then they're going in, getting drugs, you absolutely know it, all right? I want to thank George and his girl from BJ. I come up here all the time and they say, well, they never listen, and they don't. But what happened was when I keep telling them, come, they don't listen to me, they will listen to you. And George came and spoke, took me about two years to get him to here. BJ is not a talker, she walked up and spoke. People are getting very bent out of shape. When George was attacked, I walked up and down fifteen business owners in the main street area and they kept saying, oh, go see so and so. That's nothing, you want to see what happened to them. And I went and talked to them all. Seabreeze, same thing. It's not just me. The entire community is behind you 100% and I'm asking you to do the right thing. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dino Pastpalakis and on deck is Reverend C. Smythe.
Dino Pastpalakis, 565 Riverside Drive, just two words, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Our next speaker is Reverend C. Smythe and on deck is Tyler Lacomp.
Yes, God bless you all. I appreciate the opportunity to address you here tonight. I've been here a real long time. I've seen a lot of politicians come and go. I've been here since 1965. And we're supposed to have open records law in the state of Florida and also government in the sunshine in the state of Florida. And I have a real problem with Daytona Beach not recording their meetings and making us pay to record the meetings at our expense.
Excuse me, sir, we're, we're on, on an item that we want you to address.
Right, well, I'm, I'm addressing the panhandle thing too. Mr. Cohen has done an outstanding job here on the panhandling ordinance. It couldn't be any better. And we're really fortunate to get a man of his caliber and his experience on all these years in so many cities to work on our problem here. And of course, wherever I go, I see the panhandlers and they're always coming up to me. Do you have a light? Do you have two or three dollars so I can get a bus pass? While they're drinking a beer and smoking a cigarette. So if anything, Mr. Cohen deserves twice as much for what you're paying him. Because I heard on Mark Bernier today that if you figure out the hours he's got on this, it's eight dollars and 35 cents an hour. And the last time I checked, if he billed it by the hour, that's less than the minimum wage that they pay in the state of Florida. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Tyler Lacomp and on deck is Randy Dye.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, City Staff. My name is Tyler Lacomp. I reside at 255 South Peninsula here in Daytona Beach. I also have a business located at 144 South Peach Street, Networks, Inc. We have been in that building since 2012. We've invested greatly in the property several times, including a full restoration following our recent hurricanes, which flooded our building up to about here. So we love our building, it's over 100 years old almost. And during our time there, we've had a constant presence of panhandlers, other individuals around the immediate area from our building, both in the front and the rear, which is the public parking lot directly behind the Crest Building. Often our aggressive panhandling incidences have occurred with myself, my partner's staff, as well as my clients. We've recorded several instances, we've provided those videos to members of the Daytona Beach Police Staff, who have done a wonderful job identifying the individuals, you know, making sure they know where they're supposed to be and where they're not supposed to be. We have done, in several instances, we've received retaliatory attacks against our building, including our vehicles, as well as our trash being tossed, which is always nice. You know, we tell them, go away, and they make sure we remember them. We want a safe, secure, prosperous area to base our business out of. We love Peach Street, we love this town. But we actively support several local nonprofits, working diligently to provide services to this portion of our local population. And we believe that without a healthy, popular, and busy downtown core, that Daytona will never be able to realize its true potential as the town that it is. So we ask you very much to pass this ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Randy Dye and on deck is Sean Anderson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Commission, Mr. Chisholm, other City Staff. My name is Randy Dye and tonight I'm speaking on behalf of the Daytona Regional Chamber of Commerce as the Chairman of the Board. As, our chamber consists of over 1,000 businesses across Volusia County, with more than half of them being from Daytona Beach. We're here to offer our support of the panhandling ordinance before you this evening. We understand this ordinance will not eliminate panhandling in its entirety, nor should it. Like all Americans, panhandlers have First Amendment rights. However, as the area's lead business organization, we do believe we need to do everything we can to regulate the rampant panhandling we've seen throughout the city. The image of people begging on our street corners in front of businesses and retail centers is one we cannot afford to not address with this ordinance. You've heard from businesses in previous evidentiary hearings, which you've said, who are impacted by hand handlers, panhandlers stating that their customers are avoiding their business out of fear and the sometimes frightening situations they're placed in as they're asked for money. Many of our business, small business members have invested their life savings in setting up their business with the hope of being successful and providing wonderful products and services that are beneficial to our residents and our visitors. They should not have to pay for additional security or put their customers and themselves at risk in protecting their investment. We clearly understand that there is a big difference between the homeless, those that are truly down on their luck and need assistance, and panhandlers. The Chamber and the business community continue to address and support the homeless issue with supportive First Step Shelter, Hope Place, and other services to provide a hand up to those in need. Let's be clear that this ordinance is intended to address those who are preying on the compassion of our residents and visitors under the guise of needing help. In closing, there are many in the audience tonight that are here to support the ordinance. And if I would ask permission, at this time, I would ask them to stand so you can have a clear vision of the importance of moving forward the panhandling ordinance has presented this evening. Thank you for your time and your thoughtful consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Dye, and congratulations on your new and very important role as Chair for our Chamber. And thank you to all of you in the business community who are supporting this ordinance and continuing to support our community's prosperity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Our next speaker is Sean Anderson and on deck is Nick Kloris.
Good evening, my name is Sean Anderson. I live at 145 South Hollywood, on the beachside. I'm here about the panhandling issue. I am for the ordinance. I wanted to remind all of you the humanitarian effort that needs to be put in after this ordinance is put into effect. Not everyone that we come in contact with is homeless. Some of them are. This ordinance is gonna go through, the people who are homeless need to realize that there is help available. I have personally, when I jogged this city, stopped and spoken to a lot of these people who are panhandling. And I have challenged a lot of them. Here's $100. Here is a drug test. You pass this drug test, I will give you this $100. No one is taking me up on my offer. We have an issue here in this city. And if this issue isn't begun to be addressed for the protection of all of our citizens and to help others who are not making good choices with their lives, set something up to help the ones who are causing a lot of the problems within this city, it's not going to stop. I personally have, I'm at the point in my life where I wanted to, I want to invest in Daytona Beach. It's what I want to do with my life. I came here to retire to do that. This issue of the homelessness and the panhandlers, because to me, they're two separate issues. This is, these two separate issues are gonna be the deciding factor whether I stay here and invest in this area or not. I am for the panhandling ordinance. I am not against the homeless. It's a humanitarian issue at the same time. Please, don't forget that in this choice. Set something up, which you may have already done. I don't know everything that goes on in this city, but I am concerned about my fellow human being. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nick Kloris and on deck is Philip Maroni.
Good evening. I know you've heard a lot of, you said painstaking hours of people up here. And so I don't want to add too much more, other than this past weekend, I was shocked. You know, we opened a business three weeks ago down by the Ocean Center. And I've heard and read in the newspaper and spoken to other people that I know as business owners and, to be honest, was not truly aware of how serious an issue this is. We had young girls here who were part of a volleyball tournament who came into our, our restaurant and, and made us aware several times over the weekend of people urinating in front of them in the parking garage, the Ocean Center parking garage, that's adjacent to our building. We had a young lady who reported to us that somebody was defecating in the alleyway between us and the gift shop that is next to us. We came in in the morning to find our trash bin completely dumped over as someone had rummaged through our garbage. I echo the voices here because my heart goes out to people who are truly homeless and, and are needy. And, you know, we try to do things personally through my, through my church and as an individual, and obviously it's not enough. But I also recognize that it's two different issues, like we heard. You know, homelessness versus panhandling are two different things. And I support all of you in, in the decision and I applaud what, what everyone is trying to do. So thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Philip Maroni and on deck is Caleb Mack.
Evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager. Phil Maroni, 275 Clyde Morris Boulevard, Orange Beach, Florida, 32174. I'm here tonight to speak in favor of the ordinance that is proposed. As an owner and manager of commercial property in Daytona Beach area, some of it located in the downtown area, I can tell you it does have an effect. I have tenants who regularly are concerned about aggressive panhandlers who accost them, you know, as they get out of their cars to go into the buildings, et cetera. It really is a challenge. Right now Daytona Beach, thanks to the leadership here on this group, is really going through a renaissance, as my friend Skip Lilly said at the Chamber meeting. This is about economic development, growth, et cetera. Having folks out there harassing, asking for money, the optics are bad for our visitors. And obviously, for those of us who have had the unpleasant experience of dealing with some of these folks, it's a challenge. So I ask your, your consideration and approval of this. I think we're going forward, taking great steps forward in this city. And I think this is something that will add to that positive direction. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
The homeless, the beggars, the panhandlers, because these peoples have issues. They have many issues. So we have to be lovable, compassionate, and showing dignity. And you have to be aware of their needs. Because you, we all are one heartbeat from being poor ourselves. So we have to be careful what, how we address this issue. And so-
So we have to be careful what, how we address this issue. And so, let us think through it, be careful, because I know that around the city, some of y'all facilities, y'all closed the bathroom, they cannot use it. The parks, they have, where they can go and look at fishing thing, they've got big fence across it. So you have to be aware of what you do that bring on these problems. Sometime, we may be the problem why these issues are going on. They may need work, they may need psychological stuff, mental, they may, they have a lot of issues that sometime being created by ourselves as well as theirselves. So they gets a lot of issues. So be careful in when you make these rules about the homeless peoples or beggars or whatever, because they was in the days of Jesus Christ days. So be careful how you address these issues.
Our next speaker is Marjorie Johnson, and on deck is Doyle Lewis.
Marjorie Johnson, 122 South Beach Street. Panhandling is a huge problem here in the state of Daytona Beach. It has been going on for years, and it has not been stopped by this commission. And what is happening is getting worse and worse every day. I have been harassed every day, every other day by a panhandler. I feel that it's your job to address this problem, and if you pass it, you need to make sure that you enforce it, because there are a lot of rules on the books now that's not being enforced. And we need you all to make sure that we, the taxpaying citizen and voters, are not harassed by these con artists. Some of them are con artists, and some of them out there, and I've seen them go get in their nice cars and drive off after they've dipped in bade all day, and they are making a living off of this. Then you have people out there that really are in need. But I think that if this city had the police department and people to go out and stop this, it could have been stopped a long time ago. So I'd just like to say that I'm getting sick and tired of being sick and tired of being sick and tired of being harassed by these panhounds and beggars. I went to Popeyes one day to buy me some food, so one of them left off of the sidewalk, came over to my car and waved me for, and this is bad for business, because when businesses have these con artists and panhounds out there begging, that has a huge effect on their business. And the business by my house over there, the crab stock, somehow or other, he put a stop to it. They don't go to his business and bade. I haven't seen them there, but I see them on the corner. They're across from Station Shake, they're at Krispy Kreme, Popeyes, Walgreens, and other areas of down near, other areas near Ridgewood. So I'm getting sick and tired of these panhounds, and I want you to do your job that we are paying you to do, to make sure that once you do pass this, that you will make sure that it's enforced. Make it happen, you want it stopped. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Doyle Lewis, and on deck is an Alex, and I can't read the writing of the last name, from the Gaming, Inc.
Good evening. Doyle Lewis, Daytona Beach. Nine years homeless. The entire reason why I'm speaking on this issue is it's very well needed. A homeless person came knocking on my home door in 2010, begging for job and money. I didn't have a job myself. This was at my house. I helped him a little bit. Three weeks later, a homeless person showed up in their truck, stole all my construction tools, put me out of business, because it was the market crash in 2008, 2009, and 2010. This is a direct result from panhandling, begging throughout the whole county. This is a direct result of someone spreading out and panhandling because of the corners of Daytona Beach and Orange Beach and Edgewater and Port Orange had people that claimed them. It only takes about five or 10 minutes to somebody claim you out. They just throw it in their truck and go sell it. Panhandling is a direct result of the pill mills that were shut down, painkillers, heroin on the streets, meth, crack cocaine, and cocaine. Over the weekend, someone died, brain dead, in Palm Coast. It hit the news today. Twenty-three-year-old man, substance abuse. I don't think he ever had panel any issues, but I guarantee you, he got it from a panhandler. Guarantee he did. This is very well needed to help these streets straighten up. The garbage on the streets are from the people that were panhandling. I've been attacked because they know I do not do illegal drugs, and I don't have prescription drugs. Their motto is, if someone doesn't do them, they're going to tail on us. So you're a target. It's that simple. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alex GiBalee, and on deck is Carolina Aranda.
You said it correctly. Thank you. Hi, guys. My name is Alex GiBalee. I ran the CEO Gaming Convention that happened last June here in Daytona. I actually do live in Orlando, Florida, but I've been coming to Daytona since I was about five years old, one of my favorite places growing up. As many of you might have read, I had a very successful event at the Ocean Center, working with an amazing staff, also the City Commission, the Convention Bureau, all that. But unfortunately, a lot of people had instances of situations at night, walking around the city, whether it was around Beach Street, actually, I'm sorry, not Beach Street, around, you know, A1A, all that around here. And it really hurt me, especially running an event. I actually run conventions all over the world. I do, I did an event in India, I've done events in Japan, Spain, Sweden, all the time. And Daytona's always been one of my favorite events to work with, the staff here especially. But for that event to be overrun by all the articles that you may have read in the newspapers of, I'm never going back to Daytona Beach, you know, the event was amazing, but please take the Ocean Center out of Daytona Beach. It brought my eyes, obviously, to everyone's situation that had that. I've never experienced anything like that. I do drive around here. I come here maybe about once every couple of weeks to hang out. So I have seen how rampant, you know, the panhandling has been. And I, you know, I don't know how to fix anything, obviously. I leave that to you guys. But just wanted to be here as a voice of 7,000 people that had attended. And a lot of them, as soon as I announced that we were back in Daytona Beach, I'm not going to Daytona. I don't want to go there. Why is he back in Daytona? I had problems there. So that's just something, I'm glad that this is, you know, a situation that was heard. A lot of you reached out to me. I met with James before. Thank you, James, for that, your time. I met with the Chief of Police, so they have all been very helpful in assuring me that this event will go much smoother for the city. And I would just love to see that, because I think Daytona's an amazing place. I represent, again, 7,000 people came here from 36 countries across the world, in almost every single U.S. state. And for a lot of them to go, well, I don't want to ever go to that beach again, really hurts, obviously, to your city, to the business I bring. I will be back here again in June. Bring your kids, I'll let you in. But I also plan to sign a multi-year contract with Daytona, assuming everything goes well this year. So, just something to speak of, you know, I understand the last person who spoke about the difference between panhandling and homelessness. I'm sure everyone's, you know, figuring that out, but I just, I am supportive of cleaning up the city the best you can, because this is a beautiful place, and I just like to see change for the good. That way, the next generation will want to come to Daytona Beach. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our final speaker is Carolina Aranda.
Hi, my name is Carolina Aranda. I've lived in Daytona since 1992. I really love this city, and I know panhandling is a problem. And a lot of people that are panhandling, some of them, I have spoke to homeless people. I have a friend, actually, who's homeless right now with four kids, and they make it very difficult for them, sometimes if they don't have the proper identification. Obviously, if they're homeless, they don't have the money for them, and instead of helping them or telling them where they can go get all this stuff, they just shut them down. That can relate them to take them to drugs later on. You know, that hasn't been her case, thank God, but for other people. I don't know if I'm for it or against it, but I know that we should be able to help the homeless people here a little bit more, rather than making things more difficult for them, because they obviously make it more easy for the people who are on drugs, because they can just go to the health department, grab a little bag, and all their stuff is on there. Their pipes, their needles, and stuff for them to use. So they make it really easy for the drug, people who are addicted to drugs, to be able to use the drugs, because they give them free pipes, free needles. But then, when it comes to homeless people, because they need documentation to be able to get the help they need, they're not able to do as easily as falling back on drugs, to be able to forget that issue. So I think that's a very big issue, and it's a way to maybe help stop them turning into drugs, to forget about their problems.
Thank you.
That was my final speaker, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you all for your comments. Does anyone have any comments from the Commission? No comments. Okay. All right, we have a motion on the floor, and we have a second. So, all of those who are in favor of this motion, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, say the same sign. This motion carries, Madam Clerk, 7-0.
Moving on to item number 9B. It's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Preservate LBJA.
We'll hold it.
Okay.
And just allow anyone who's going to leave to go ahead. Take care. Be in touch.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah.
Good to see you, ma'am.
Actually, Vanessa, can you come here for a second? Can you make photocopies of these so we can get them to the court reporter?
Okay, we'll carry on.
Okay. Moving on to item number 9B. It's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Preservate LBJA, Large Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment Ordinance on Second Reading, Public Hearing. An ordinance adopting the Comprehensive Plan Amendment in accordance with Chapter 163, Part 2 Florida statutes, amending the future land use element Neighborhood 5, to increase the density from one unit per gross acre to two units per gross acre, with a maximum density of four units per net acres for a 130 plus or minus acre parcel generally located on the west side of LBJA Boulevard between International Tennis Drive and International Speedway Boulevard, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and is requested from the applicant to continue this item until the February 20th, 2019 meeting.
Motion to continue to February 20th.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.